Wisconsin, the Supreme Court, of course, the legislature, and the governor, as well as the law schools. The purpose of it, as I indicated, is to improve the administration of justice and support the various civil legal aid services which are available throughout the state of Wisconsin, and to encourage access through the court system. This is a great effort. It's a long-term commitment. Everyone has a stake in the justice system. Every Wisconsin resident has a stake in the system. And we are prepared, through these hearings, to do our part in education of the public and also to see what we can do about filling the gap that exists with regard to financing in this state as compared to other states in the United States, which is substantial. We have a sort of keynote speaker who's going to say a few remarks, and that's Justice Ann Wells Bradley, who is with us down at the other end of the table here. Thank you very much for coming, Justice Bradley. Justice Bradley was elected in 1995 and again in 2005 to the Supreme Court of the state of Wisconsin. Prior to that, she was in private practice, and she also informed me just a few minutes ago, which I didn't know, she was also a teacher before she was a lawyer. And I'm sure that has come in handy for her over the years in her position. She was a circuit court judge in Marathon County, starting in 1985. She was the winner of the Judicar Society's Haley Award, which is a national honor for judges for outstanding efforts, long-term contributions, have resulted in substantial improvement of the justice system. I was handed a list of her accomplishments, and I came up with 12 here, very substantial things that Justice Bradley has done for all of us in terms of trying to improve the justice system and make it run better. She's been on the Board of Directors of the International Judicial Academy in a lecture, also lectured in the American Bar Association Asian Institute. She has served as a North American delegate of the Board of Directors of the International Women's Judges Association. She was elected a member of the American Law Institute and a member of the American Judicar Society. She's on the State Bar and Bench Committee and on the Board of Directors of the University of Wisconsin Law School and the Judicial Conference Executive Committee and the federal and state judicial council. She's a past Associate Dean of the Wisconsin Judicial College, and she is a Commissioner of the National Conference of Uniform Laws. I'll tell you, when I first started the practice of law, I was trying to figure out how to do the Uniform Commercial Code, and that group was extremely helpful. She's a chairman of the Wisconsin Rhodes Scholarship Committee and a member of the Wisconsin Judicial Council. Please welcome Justice Ann Wells Bradley.
Thank you for that kind introduction. I'm delighted to be here today. I remember hearing that the Perry Crewman, he and Beth were on the train leaving Washington after finishing his term of office because he got to his home and stayed that off the train. There's nothing quite like being back home again. And I always feel that way. I live in Wausau, some of you may know, but most often my movies on the south of the state court take me to wraps around the parts of the state. So if I can be in Wausau and to participate in an unfortunate school event like this, it brings joy to me. It brings joy to me not just because I'm here, but because I'm here about something that I feel passionate about. I feel passionate about the issues of access to justice. So I want to thank those on the panel today, members of the Access to Justice Committee for their unfevered and maybe undyed litigants also to issues of access to justice. And I want to thank at the outset those of you who came today. Thank you in advance for your presentations to the Access to Justice Committee and thanking you for your interest in this important issue. We in the United States are committed to the peaceful resolution of disputes through the justice system. But as many of you know, the law is complex in courts and some of the administrative agencies, and it's designed for attorneys trained to deal with those complexities. Yet many people in Wisconsin who have families, who have jobs, who own their own homes and pay taxes contend with significant legal problems without any help from a lawyer. Those without attorneys who try to navigate the system are, in all likelihood, disadvantaged. We do not want to see unrecognized people cheated in their opportunity to receive the legal resolution they seek. The self-represented litigant represents, of course, a challenge to the court system, of which cannot represent either party or both parties. Cases oftentimes take longer than the parties don't have counsel, yet the very integrity of our judicial system is compromised when legal representation for critical needs is available to only those with financial needs, available to only those with money. The lack of access to counsel deigns our sense of fair play upon which our legal assistance founded. I've been on the Supreme Court since 1995, eighteen years of meeting from Wausau to Madison. And I remember it was about 2004, when the issue again heated up about legal services, needs that are unmet, the access to justice issues. And it was in July of 2005 when the President of the State Bar of Wisconsin established the Wisconsin Access to Justice Study Committee to conduct an assessment, an analysis, of the legal needs among those with low income in our state. So the State Bar and the Wisconsin Supreme Court joined in essentially together so that we could better understand the scope and the impact of the problems of access to justice for low-income residents. And the study committee, with lots of enthusiasm, lots of energy, did that today, Legal Needs Study, in its title reforge entitled "Bridging the Justice Gap: Wisconsin's Unmet Legal Needs." The report was completed in 2007. And the study committee concluded that more than half a million people, 500,000 people in Wisconsin faced significant legal problems without any legal assistance. As a kid growing up in southwest Wisconsin, a small community called Richland Center, my family would have been among those 500,000 who could not afford legal assistance. And now with a very large extended family, I have in the Madison greater area alone about 21 first husbands, there are many of my family members, my relatives, who also are part of that 500,000 who have unmet legal needs. There's no easy answer to the question of how all people can guarantee access to attorney. But solutions can only be found through the efforts of many, including those in the legal profession, the law schools, the courts, the legislature, non-governmental entities, and dedicated individuals, or those who are here today on the stage and those of you who are here in the lobby. After the report was issued, hearings were conducted in Madison regarding access to justice, and ultimately, as Attorney Rice says, this court issued an order in 2009 creating this mission. I am hopeful that the hearings here today and those that have been conducted around the state will provide greater information on unmet legal needs and provide light for the path along the way of how we as a court and all of us as a community can improve access to justice. Thank you.
One of the things which the Commission realized right away was that we should do a video. Most of the other Access to Justice Commissions around the country have done some. There were some very good ones. We initially thought we could probably do something, maybe even better, and I think we have. And we're going to show this to you at this time. But I want to emphasize some things that were said, that are said in that video. First of all, there's going to be some talk about going to court alone and what kind of trauma that might be for a person. There's going to be talk about the impact on the courts that this may have, talking about lamb going to the slaughter, someone says. And basically, this is the justice gap that this video is going to emphasize. At the end of the video, there's particularly a good statement directed at lawyers, but I think it goes to us all with regard to this justice gap. And it says, "We need to shout out loud that something needs to be done about this matter." So welcome to the video.
Every day, Wisconsin residents who face important legal problems are forced to go it alone in court, before government agencies, and then negotiations. Sometimes they just give up because they can't afford the help they need and they can't effectively represent themselves. They fall into the justice gap. Courts are formal places. It's an intimidating environment. And the question becomes, to my mind, whether a lamb is being sent to the slaughter. Oftentimes, you can see, in fact, the slaughter occurred.
A great number of people, especially in the area of family law, are going without representation. There are many people who just can't afford an attorney. So not having an attorney, and especially not having one early on, can be very harmful in the long run.
If someone is representing themselves, it makes me feel like it's not fair in a lot of ways. They're not getting the same advantages that they would have if they were represented.
The bedrock legitimacy of the court system is based upon fairness. And when you have one party coming to a dispute with a cannon and another party coming to a dispute with a BB gun, the results are often very predictable in advance. The Supreme Court created the Access to Justice Commission based upon studies that were done identifying the legal needs of underrepresented litigants in Wisconsin and in recognition of the fact that the high volume of unrecognized people was having a significant impact on the court system.
There's a whole list of ramifications that range all the way from losing your apartment to losing your children to losing your rights and being put in jail. All of those things are rights that an attorney needs to be there to help protect. Changing one person's life, helping them stay in their home, helping them stay in their apartment, helping them have a safe and stable family will impact everybody who lives around them.
Having attorneys involved in the case really adds to the ability of the courts and the judicial system to do justice in a particular case.
The need is huge, and there will always be a need for improved access to justice.
In terms of relieving a lot of stress that was involved, it did wonders. It was a great comfort to know that I had somebody there to back me up. Dealing with court is stressful enough, and when you feel like you don't know what you're doing, it just adds to that stress.
Being a librarian and coming into this environment without a legal background, I've really come to appreciate how profoundly law impacts all of our lives. I mean, ideally, legal advice or representation would be available to everyone, but if it's not and you can't afford it, you should still be able to be as best prepared as you can for your day in court, because everyone deserves a day in court.
The beauty of our clinic, and I think the other clinics that have been set up in the state, is that they're very easy to establish. The model was actually very, very simple. There's very little red tape. We simply have several attorneys available each week in the courthouse to explain the family court process and to help the litigants fill out forms to bring their case to court. Just a little bit of help, a little bit of assistance can be just so important to the litigant. They have the confidence they need then to go to court. They have the belief that they can affect some change in their private life by participating in the court system.
One lawyer can definitely make a difference doing pro bono work. I just know, in my community, I have helped people, you know, getting their security deposit back, getting creditors off their back, and their lives are that much better. And the appreciation that they show, it's just so rewarding. And I do feel like, for these people, I have made a difference in their lives.
The delivery and dispensation of justice is at the very foundation of this country's constitution, of the concept of democracy. Our society needs to take steps to address the justice gap. Everyone can help. What lawyers can do about it is to do pro bono services and to open their mouths and shout out loud that this is something that cannot persist if our system has a chance of continuing to function at its proper level.
As you can see, I think people who put this together did a marvelous job with this video. And I want to publicly thank Marcia Mansfield and her committee, and Jeff Brown as well in the State Bar, who's our coordinator, so to speak, for all the work they did on this video. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our moderator, Eric Giordano.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Once again, I'd like to thank you for coming to the Access to Justice Commission's fifth statewide hearing, Act VI, that will be held this season. We want to remind you that the purpose of the hearing is to gather information about and raise awareness of access to justice issues in Wisconsin, the current availability of civil legal services, and the unmet need for legal services, form an active network of advocates for access to justice and civil legal services, and advance the Commission's work, its mission and statement of values. My name is Eric Giordano. I'm the Director of the Wisconsin Institute for Public Policy and Service, located here on the campus. And it's my pleasure now to introduce our distinguished panel. Immediately to my left and going in that direction, we begin with Judge Frederick Fleischauer, who's retired now after 31 years as a circuit court judge in Portage County. He is currently serving as the temporary district attorney until the winter of the November election and swearing-in of the new district attorney in Portage County. To his left, Judge Michael Moran is the newest circuit court judge in Marathon County. Prior to being elected judge, he worked as an attorney in the state public defender's office in Marathon County. Next, we have Rosemary Albert, who's an attorney and the executive director of Wisconsin Judicar, Inc., a civil legal services provider for the northern 33 counties. And I think it's worth mentioning that this event today wouldn't have happened without Wisconsin Judicar and the hard work of Beth Ann Richland and others at Judicar. So we're thankful for all of you. Next, to her left is Jocelyn Burkin, Burcon, sorry, who's the constituent services director of Congressman Sean Duffy. And I don't think it would be unfair if I revealed that she was looking forward to To her left, we have Father Bill Ribbons, who does volunteer work for Catholic charities and other nonprofits in the Green Bay area. He is also a Commission member, and he was appointed by the Wisconsin Supreme Court to the Commission. To Father Bill's left is Don Frisky, a small business owner in Merrill, Wisconsin. He was appointed to the Commission by Assembly Speaker Jeff Fitzgerald. And of course, many of you in this area will remember the great service that he rendered while he was in Assembly representing Wisconsin's 35th District. And then, of course, we have, to his left, Maury Rice, who you've met, who is of counsel with the law firm of Anderson in Stevens Point. He was appointed to the Commission by the Wisconsin Supreme Court and is the immediate past president of Portage County Legal Aid. So I want to thank all of you for being here and taking your time, and especially the Commission members. I think your participation shows the commitment that you have to this process.
There's one Commissioner who will probably show up late as well. You might indicate, we had a hearing, it was a bit out of there, you were sure. Can you indicate how this is?
Sure. So the one who may be showing up a little late is Howard Bickler, an attorney with the Forest County Potawatomi. He was appointed to the Access to Justice Commission by the State Bar of Wisconsin. In order to allow everyone who is interested the opportunity to testify today, we ask you to please keep your remarks to three minutes, five at the maximum. We realize that this is a short amount of time, and for that reason, we ask that you please provide or supplement your remarks with any written testimony that you may have, which can be submitted today to Attorney Beth Ann Richland, who is down here, if you can just wave hello. Or you can also post it or send it online at the Commission's website. The panel wants to hear about experiences, suggestions, and insights on issues facing people who have faced barriers in accessing the justice system or commonalities among the groups of people that you may work with if you're a service provider or advocate. Please briefly summarize who you are and the work that you do when you come to the microphone here on either side of the stage. Then feel free to address any of the following. Who is finding help for their legal needs and who is falling through the cracks? What impact has finding or not finding legal help made in your life or the lives of the people you serve? What is Wisconsin doing well for its low-income or vulnerable residents who need help with civil legal issues? What should we all be doing? How can our community better meet the civil legal needs of those who cannot help themselves? Finally, we want you to know that the Commission plans to record the hearing for future use in its efforts to expand public and private support for civil legal services to low-income people in Wisconsin. The recording will take two forms, a court reporter, who you can see on stage, and a video, which is being recorded as we speak. Please make sure that you've checked in at the table outside if you plan to speak and that you have signed the release form. You do not have to sign the release form in order to participate in this event, but we hope that you'll agree to do so, and that will be, your testimony will be useful to advancing the cause of access to justice by sharing what you have put together in your testimony today. So without further ado, we'll now hear from our first speaker. And I just want to mention that there are a couple of ground rules here. This is a public setting. We ask that as you come to speak that you, again, identify yourself and keep your remarks to three to five minutes. We do reserve the right to interrupt if it's going too long, because we have to respect that other people are here as well to testify. Also, we ask that each of the audience members accord one another and the speakers the respect that we all deserve here as participants. So we'd like to call first Don Hermanson.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have a dual disability. I'm both a lawyer and a professor, so the three to five minutes is going to be quite difficult. I'm speaking today only in my capacity as an attorney who's been practicing in Wausau since 1979. I also teach. To give Eric time to do these things, I teach the political science classes, and that's relevant to what we're talking about. But I am not speaking to you as a representative of the University of Wisconsin system because the law does not allow me to. So having said that, the first thing I would point out is that I thought that the video was really good but was way too limited. Everything that the law does is help negotiate differences of opinion, all of us as sovereigns have. Each individual's sovereign. We have the ultimate right to decide what we like and what we don't like. The state and the federal government are sovereigns. They have disputes. What courts are is our way of resolving disputes between sovereigns. And one of the biggest problems we have is that people need to feel that it's fair. The interesting thing was is that both the video and your discussion focus on the fact that having a loud voice, a skilled attorney, is what makes things unfair. But I think the Commission does need to at least think about the fact that's not the only point that you need to be looking at. Armed today with the 2007 study that Justice Bradley brought out, the first question is, is how come it isn't being done? And the reason is that the first place that we can be fair is in the legislature, because it's the legislative bodies which define the rules. So I don't understand why a Packer backer who was celebrating the last time the Packers got to the Super Bowl was denied health care benefits because his insurer claimed he was an alcoholic when that wasn't the issue. But the only place he could go to get fairness was the U.S. District Court in Madison. Why? Because Congress took away the right of citizens to argue locally their concerns about health insurance. It's ERISA. Read the law. This was unfair because it would cost him $15,000 to get an attorney in Madison to do a summary judgment proceeding in Madison. Is that fair? No, it isn't. As a result of that unfairness, nobody got paid. Not the hospital that treated him, not the rehab service that treated him, not the second nursing home that treated him, because he lacked the access to redress the wrong, at least from his perspective, because the law blocked it. So the first place to have equal access to justice is to make sure that we realize that it's not just the fact that you have a lawyer, it's do we have a fair law to allow a lawyer to help you with? And many times, the laws we have tilt the debt by making it more expensive to go to Madison, to federal court, to deal with a procedure, or to have to go some other place. And so I think that lawmakers are also part of the solution, because I'm focusing on solutions, not problems today, that you can do. Now, the second thing is, is we should realize that it's all in our self-interest to have a fair justice system. It's absolutely in everybody's interest. Now, when I was a baby lawyer, my wife and I moved to Wausau in 1979. We didn't have a penny, literally. We bought a car six months later, but the car dealer had to deliver it to our house because we didn't have a way to get to Stevens Point to pick it up. Well, good for me. I was lucky. But most people that I deal with and have dealt with historically didn't have that opportunity. They couldn't even get the justice. So the state of California, and I will leave this for the committee, did a really good job in studying civil justice in rural California to point out that when lawmakers are making laws, you should think about the geography and the legality of people. Because the problems that someone in Ashland County or in rural California of just finding a lawyer are way different. a lawyer are way different than the problems of someone in Madison or Milwaukee. So because I only have a little time, and I'm going to steal some if I can, read the report. The California report applies to Wisconsin, and I'll leave it for you to look at.
Thank you.
I got a bunch of stuff here. I can't help myself. I'm an instructor. The next thing that we should point out is that to be fair, we need to be fair to everybody. So I'll leave that here. The governor has put out a thing about poverty. The problem with this page is it doesn't measure unfairness. It only puts certain measures of economic injustice. So I'll probably be happy, if you are so inclined, to present a number of things about my 30 years of experience as a lawyer, almost exclusively for people in poverty. And in the last 20 years, I've added on everybody else, small business owners, not Mr. Frisky, but people in your arena, other persons with disabilities, elders. So if you'd like, I'll be happy to contribute those, but I'll submit the results of many states to the panel.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Don.
It's appropriate that Louis Malinsky, the Assemblyman for various parts of Portage County, and other counties, is here. Melissa, would you like to say?
I think I've had occasion to talk to him about a few things, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malinsky is here.
Okay. Greetings. We'd also, we'd now like to call Catherine Monk.
I want to, first of all, thank the members of the Access to Justice Commission for arranging this opportunity to speak today. My name is Catherine Monk, and I am the executive director of Justice Works Limited. Justice Works is a community-based nonprofit justice organization in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. In addition to other programming, we run the Family Law Information Center, which provides pro se assistance to members of Portage County. My comments today center on funding issues for pro se services. In 2007, Justice Works received a $5,000 grant from the State Bar of Wisconsin for the purpose of designing and implementing a process to assist unrepresented litigants with family law issues. After that seed funding was depleted, we continued staffing the service through a federal earmark grant that supported general justice programming for a nonprofit organization. This federal funding is slated to end early in 2013. Since the inception of our pro se service, we have worked together with justice system stakeholders to create a sustainable funding base for the pro se center. Initially, we implemented a minimal voluntary service fee for pro se clientele, but the majority of service participants, as you can probably guess, opted out of paying this fee or did not have the means to pay this fee due to indigency. We raised the fee, but saw a corresponding drop in numbers in our service and a corresponding rise in pro se litigants appearing in court once again unprepared. This past year, we incorporated a certificate of readiness requirement for pro se litigants and charged a fee for the certificate collected through the county treasurer's office. This has been quite successful. Although the pro se clientele received the same services before, the fact that they received something tangible, like a certificate indicating that their documents are ready for court review, seems to make the fee more palatable. We've had virtually no complaints about the service fee, which is currently $75 for a petitioner, $25 for a respondent, and $50 each for joint petitioners. The majority of pro se clientele utilizing our services fall in the indigent or working poor financial classification. The certificate of readiness fee is waived for the indigent. Due to the certificate requirements, our numbers increased substantially in 2012, because now all pro se litigants in Portage County are required to go through our service for assistance instead of utilizing court personnel time. This has made the system much more cost efficient because of a reduction in multiple court hearings. However, the service fees alone do not cover our overhead and staffing. We utilize volunteers who enhance our staffing capacity at the center. However, we have found that volunteer-based services do not function well without a paid staff coordinator component. From our experience, we have found that you cannot rely exclusively on volunteers to meet the needs of the large number of pro se litigants flooding into the court system. I am aware of other pro se services that utilize volunteer attorneys to staff drop-in hours that are typically a couple hours per week. But if you look close, I believe that you will find that these services are typically underutilized, because the majority of pro se litigants cannot make it to the service center during such restricted hours. As for our current funding status, Portage County is providing some funding for the pro se center in 2013, but this still leaves us operating at a funding deficit. My understanding is that the county plans to discontinue this funding at year's end, expecting the pro se service to be financially self-supporting. To me, this orientation flies in the face of statutory obligations in Wisconsin that require our county to meet process needs for pro se litigants. That requires government accountability. In reaching out for donations and funding support for the pro se center, our nonprofit continually deals with the problem of private funders thinking this is a funding obligation of government, and government thinking that this is a funding obligation of the private sector. We also run into the problem of individuals thinking that volunteers are a solution for funding shortfalls, that is, that we can operate for free with volunteers. We are indebted to our pro se center volunteers. They have helped us improve service delivery. They have donated many hours of their valuable time and talent to helping pro se litigants. However, consistent volunteers who can handle basic legal process information for pro se clients with complex needs are far and few between. I encourage the commission to arrange for a current assessment of how pro se centers are currently operating around the state, how these services are funded, and whether they are effective at meeting legal process needs of the pro se population. That would give us the opportunity to learn from each other and share information. I want to thank everyone in this room, at the table or across from it, who are working so hard to ensure a system that provides all individuals with equal opportunity for access to our justice system and equal opportunity for an equitable justice outcome. It is easy to get people up to the courthouse door, but not so easy to get them through the door, down the hall, and through the court system to the other side. The Access to Justice Commission findings will surely help. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind the panel also that if there's any questions you'd like to ask, you feel free to do so at any time. We'd now like to have Jeff Sargent come forward, and then, following Jeff, we'll have Melissa Dahlkert.
My name is Jeff Sargent. I'm the executive director of North Central Community Action Program. The mission of our agency is to act as an advocate, provider, and facilitator of programs and services for low-income individuals, Lincoln, Marathon, and Wood County. We seek to create opportunities for people and communities to obtain skills, identify and utilize resources, and explore innovative options necessary to reduce poverty and increase self-sufficiency. Throughout my career, trained as a social worker, some of you know me as a social worker from many years ago. Throughout my career, the issues that I've dealt with mainly have revolved around poverty, child welfare, domestic violence, and the like. And what we see at North Central Community Action Program kind of falls in what I call, under what I call the rock theory, that if you see a rock along the side of the road, you might be curious to pick it up and look under there. And most people, when they pick that rock up, what they see, they don't like, and so they put the rock back. They kind of go, ooh, and they set it back down. Unfortunately, our society feels that way about issues around poverty, domestic violence, child welfare, all the things that I mentioned earlier. It's sad when our society goes into an outrage over a call of a football game, but yet every day, we know about statistics that show women and children living in poverty and what that means to those families in our communities. That doesn't resonate with people. And what I like about what the commission's trying to do is keep a focus on what's really important here, which is trying to address and make sure that people have justice and access to justice that they deserve, which is really tough for our clients that we serve, because they are poor, they are low-income, and they feel, they feel like they don't have a right to the same treatment that others do, which is sad. Recently, in an application that we were applying for some funding, the agency or the group that was going to make a decision wanted some clarification on a situation with one of the families we were providing them information for. And they said, can you tell us what led to this family's situation? Well, to answer that question, you know, why are people in the situation they're in would take hours to explain. And I think that's one of the real troubles that all the people that we see come in. They come in for issues around rental, housing, emergency assistance. They don't have money to pay bills. They're making decisions on the fly. And so what we try to provide them is assistance for emergency situations, and then provide them access to services that can help them. Locally, we're one of the organizations that can help with the Judicare application. For us, Judicare, for the clients that we serve, is so critical. It's good for them to have that 1-800 number. It's good to have them have access to somebody that they can talk to about their situation. And so throughout those services that Judicare can provide, the customers that we serve, they get a start. For the people that we serve, they've, a lot of times, feel like they don't even have a place to start. So for us, giving information that helps them get access to a starting point gives them hope. It doesn't solve the problem, it doesn't give them the solution, but it does give them something to look forward to. Thank you.
I just have a question. In front of my court, I'm seeing a lot more people representing themselves, especially, I'm seeing more of our Southeast Asian population, our Hispanic population, among others. And I can only imagine how difficult it would be to appear in court without an attorney, but also to have a significant language barrier, and even a cultural barrier. What challenges do you see, and this goes to the other speakers, for our minority populations, who I'm seeing a large number more appearing without an attorney? Is there anything that you think can be done to help that? Because it seems to be a double experience or a difficult experience. And do you see any, anything that's being done, or can you acknowledge anything's being done for maybe non-English-speaking individuals who can't afford an attorney on top of that?
That's like answering that question, what's led to the situation for this client? That's a tough one. I mean, clearly, the language barrier, cultural barriers and differences are certainly factors for people. Again, I think just having a starting point for some of those folks, whether it's someone to talk to that understands what the legal issues are for them, whether it's actually just language itself, whether it's just a resource or an advocate who understands their perspective, who then can help translate legal, kind of translate cultural things into legal terms that, for their situation, might make a difference. You know, I'll be interested to hear what others have to say about that, too, but definitely, yeah, there are situations where when we kind of talk with a client, and then we leave the room, and we kind of go, boy, you know, this just multiplied the problem tenfold because of these other situations, too. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll now hear from Melissa Dahlkert, and then, following Melissa, we'll have Judith Stern. And if, Judith, maybe you can come up and be ready to go next. We'd appreciate that. I also want to remind everyone that we're going to try to keep it from three to five minutes. We're running a little over here.
Thank you for having me speak here today. My name is Melissa Dahlkert, and I am the present president of the Portage County Legal Aid Society. I'm also on the Board of Justice Works with Ms. Kitty Monk. With our organization, we are actually in the minority. There are very few counties that provide services and have a legal aid society in their community. So we have had that. We've had that for a number of years. That has been through, at first, one grant, now we're up to three grants, to kind of get us almost to the point where the one grant used to have us. So the need is, without question, great in any county, including Portage County. There are a majority of people who have difficulties with affording attorneys in the court system. In Portage County, at this time, there is, I believe, out of 158 filings, there is 12% who are represented by both sides having an attorney. So 12% have attorneys on both sides. The vast majority have just one attorney, or in a lot of cases, no attorney at all. For a person who is indigent, the cost of a retainer is about what they spend a year on groceries. So there's the understanding that the amount is prohibitive. It's something they couldn't hope to save up, and it's something where if they had extra money, they would be putting it towards electric bills, they'd be putting it towards grocery bills. It's just not a possibility. So what the Portage Legal Aid Society tries to do is let people know that there is representation available for people who do not have the means to hire an attorney. We have an application process where if they are 125% or below the poverty guidelines for the federal levels, then they can meet with an attorney. We start with a screening that happens, we hope, once a month on Fridays in the afternoons. That screening attorney, who's a volunteer, then tries to help them as much as they can. They can also say, okay, you need some help, and give them access to help in a pro se basis for them to represent themselves. We do have a pro se center for that. And then, for some of the individuals, it's too complex, it's too big of a case, there's too many issues going on, a lot of times, that include domestic violence, that include power differentiation between people. And for those individuals, we try to match them with a volunteer attorney within the community. We don't have as many volunteer attorneys as we would like, but that's understandable, considering the cases that we ask attorneys to do full representation on, a lot of times are hydrous. There's a lot of issues going on at the same time, and the attorney knows that they could be looking at dozens of hours, they could be looking at potentially 100 hours in a family law case. So that it is difficult to find attorneys to match how many people need them. But we have been very fortunate with attorneys who have taken our cases. We actually have a few new attorneys in the last six months who have agreed to take our cases, so that we are very grateful for. But what I've found is we're asking an incredible amount from a very few people. We're asking the boards for Legal Aid Society, as well as for Justice Works, to work on grants, because one grant is seldom enough anymore. So there are dozens of hours just spent on trying to get funding. We started with one grant for years that supported our organization. Now we have the one main grant, and we have two smaller grants. So in a calendar year, we're working on three separate grants, and that takes time that we'd much rather spend working with indigent individuals. That's where we'd like to be spending the time, but the need is great. We need to have funding in order to have the lights on, to have supplies. We have a litigation fund, so that if an attorney takes one of our cases, if they have out-of-pocket expenses, we're not asking the attorney to cover those. So we do have some funds. We also have funds, we got one of our grants was specifically for interpreters, because we found that the population in Portage County, especially the Hispanic population, is growing. And if you have an attorney and you have somebody who doesn't speak English, unless there's an interpreter there, there's not too much that can be done. The courts will provide interpreters for people while they're in court, but any attorney will tell you that they need to meet with their clients ahead of time, they need to know the situation, they need to have good information, and you need to have an interpreter in order to do that. So we are working, we are doing everything that we can with the organization. We definitely wish we could do more, but what I would like this committee to take away is that we can't continue asking a dozen people, two dozen people, even three dozen people to carry the burden for this issue. It needs to be, not just lawyers, but it needs to be the general population. And a society won't be judged on how you treat the millionaire, the billionaire, people who have enough. A society can much more fairly A society can much more fairly be judged on, here's a person who doesn't have wealth, who doesn't have much, who doesn't have materials. And how we address that person and how we treat them and whether they have a fair shake in the justice system is a definition of our society, and it's a definition of every person who lives in the state.
Thank you. Judith Stern. And then following Judith, we'll hear from Susan Abbott.
Good afternoon. My name is Judith Stern. I am a staff attorney and special projects director at Wisconsin Judicare. I have specialized in family law for 30 years. I'm the lead attorney for Judicare's three outreach projects. The basic Judicare model is that we provide a stipend to private attorneys to represent people. There's also on-staff assistance, and I am an on-staff attorney providing assistance. When we talked earlier, the moderator said you were interested in who is falling through the cracks. And the film highlighted the need in the family law area. It is the area that I know best and one that I want to start out with today. The three projects that Judicare does in the community, the first is an outreach to the women's community, our domestic violence shelter. The second is an outreach to the court system in Lincoln and Taylor County to provide assistance with pro se problems. The third is our medical legal partnership that we do with Bridge Clinic here, a low-income medical clinic. And the director of that clinic will be here later to give you a few more insightful information about how we serve low-income people with a medical legal model. I would like to start and talk with you a little bit about the fault of the domestic violence victims that are falling through the cracks for the lack of funding, for the variety of reasons. Two Tuesdays a month, in fact, I came from there this afternoon directly here. I hold conferences with women who are victims of domestic violence at the women's community. I provide them with legal information, advice, and guidance to the best of my ability if they have to proceed pro se without an attorney. My representation, as part of our funding contract, I open seven cases a year to assist these victims in court in their family law matters. My representation is often with non-English speaking victims. I have counseled women at the shelter who shake with fear at the mere prospect of asking for child support. They have attempted to support six children on $500 a month and are terrified to even file a paper asking for child support. Going to court pro se is beyond comprehension for them. They don't know the procedures, they don't know what to say, they don't know what's important, and they don't know when to say it. So without an attorney, victims of violence are essentially victimized again and again in the legal system, because they cannot function there without professional legal help. You can do the best you can to give them advice and guidance, but when they get to court, they're afraid, they'll stutter, and they'll forget. And important information does not get in front of the courts when people represent themselves pro se. Without additional funding for legal services via lawyer assessment or mandated pro bono, via including additional money in the state budget, victims of violence will not be served. Right now, we have to turn away 2/3 of the otherwise financially qualified victims of violence, because we lack the funding to serve them. Oftentimes, with disputes over custody for victims of violence, we run across problems with the current indigency standards. I would ask that you consider purporting to the legislature and the state to have consistent standards of indigency. Right now, one set of laws applies to indigent for purposes of filing and service fees. A different set of laws applies to the fees for guardian at lioms, which are four or five times more than the service and filing fees. I have had victims of violence hesitate in bringing up unsafe or unthinkable conditions that their children are experiencing in the home of the other parent. They don't want to take it to court, because they can't afford the $750 as a guardian at liom deposit. And the way the current statute is written, it requires judges to make a determination that if one party is indigent on guardian at liom fees, then the other one should have to pay it. That doesn't seem fair to a judge. If one party is indigent, if the judge decides that both parties are indigent, then the county should pay for it. This is the way the statute is written. I put to you that judges who repeatedly give $750, $800, $900 bills to their county are not going to be very popular when it comes to election day. And that is an issue as well. That's why I'm asking that you consider at least having a standard indigency, a consistent indigency rule, so that once that decision is made, it can't be changed later when addressing a different need. If you're indigent in the beginning, you should be indigent consistently throughout the case. That makes sense. That is a small way that we can change equal access to justice and protect the children who are sometimes victims, as well as their parents, of domestic violence. If I'm running over time, please, somebody throw up a hand, because I can talk for a long time. I, too, suffer from being a lawyer. Am I over time? Am I done?
Yeah, yes, if you don't mind.
I have one question. How many attorneys in, for example, Wausau, take Judicare appointments?
In family law matters?
Yeah.
Oh, how many? I would be guessing, Judge. I don't handle that side of it. I assess the cases and send them to our case manager, who then farms them out to the lawyers in the Wausau area. I would say on domestic violence cases, my guess would be eight to 10.
Is there a shortage of lawyers taking Judicare?
Oh, I think every lawyer should take Judicare, and every lawyer should take, every lawyer in the state should be taking cases.
Mike?
Yes, there's definitely a shortage.
Pressure, Mike. So there was, there's a shortage of attorneys that are willing to do this work?
Just last week, I spoke to our director, our case manager, and she told me that she couldn't find a lawyer for one woman in the Wausau area, in the family law arena.
You mentioned lawyer assessments. Does some of the funding for Judicare come from that source?
It does. We do get some money through the lawyer assessments.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Sir, here. So I, in the middle of your testimony, you had one blurb that caught my ears, mandatory pro bono. How would you see that?
Well, I think it's a privilege to have a license to practice the law in the state of Wisconsin. And as a privilege, there can be conditions. And the Supreme Court is in charge of what we have to do to be lawyers, to stay lawyers, to govern us, to watch, to watch over us. I think that could be a rule. I think it could be implemented, that you, I mean, in my mind, in my simple mind, and I know it's not this simple, I think you could say, you can either do so many pro bono cases a year or be assessed by your way of, if you like.
I would just point out that Illinois, I believe, has a requirement that you do, I think, 25 hours. And they actually have a reporting system where you actually have to report that you've done these things. So that's a, that could be a potential model that would go greatly. Right now, as I understand, the only thing that a lawyer doesn't want to do any pro bono, he pays $50 to the state bar and ends up at Judicare. Not at Judicare, but with that.
Let me respond to that. I think that is one way, but I don't think that the lawyers should bear the whole burden on their backs. I have been a lawyer too long. I think the legislature has to put $1 million back into the budget that was there at the beginning of the recession and allocate it as a need to this state.
What about the two and a half minute that was taken out of the budget?
Well, that could go back, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, next, here from Susan Abbott, followed by Sally Olson.
Good afternoon. I didn't expect to speak. I was just coming to listen. I happened to just hear, because I saw this headline in the newspaper, so I bought it, and that's how I read the inside, and I saw the public opinion that Mr. Attorney Rice wrote. I am here because I'm one of these pro se people, and I have been searching for help for years and years and years. I would like to know what is wrong, what is wrong with the lawyers and the court system when the person that, the person that is the victim, being me, and I have proven it, and I have the very people that have done these violations against my rights, their own words, their deeds, their policies, their own testimony has solidified this truth, how can these people be rewarded? And I am the one that is holding the bag here. I want to know it. I want to have an answer to this. I want to know why I do not deserve equal protection under the law. I had to be my own, you know, I went to court representing myself, and I wasn't afraid. I wasn't afraid, because I knew I had everything. I had it all. I had the ammunition. Those people, the more it went on, the more they had buried themselves. The more they said, the more I had. And one attorney told me and my sons, we went, they never saw anything like this before, and yep, they forged your consent form. They forged, you forget about it. And I says, oh, I will not forget about it. This is wrong, and I will decide when I'm going to forget about it. If I would have forgot, I would have never found all these other things out. And as years went by and time went by, I was educating myself more, finding out all these things about federal regulations and, I mean, I couldn't believe it. And then when I complained to the state about this, they believed forgery, that's a felony, that's a very serious crime, they wouldn't do anything for me. And their own letter confirmed to me that the doctor was guilty by unprofessional conduct. Then I complained about the nurse, because I had made transparencies. I just investigated everything. You could see who did it. Then they weren't answering my questions. And so finally, I called once at Madison, and a gentleman left a message on my telephone, and he said, oh, because of your complaint, they closed it. And I thought, what? This is a forgery. This is about my rights, my body, what they did to me without my legal permission and knowledge, and they closed it? When I complained, then, oh, they were going to, I've got all the information, the documentation, they're going to open it up. And consequently, they did not answer me 45 days, which they're supposed to by statute. I found that out. Time was going by, and I'm thinking, I didn't get any answers, you know, nothing was coming. So I called Madison up. And finally, I talked to this Romi Carter up there, so she sent me the letter the nurse had responded to by the nursing board. And she just so coincidentally sent this hospital policy document. Lo and behold, I had been looking at a consent form that was not only forged, it was no good. It was a null and void document. And I want to know how a judge does not know what the word void means, because that's another part of this nightmare, because all the hospital had was a void consent form, and they had a bill. And I know it was the bill. In the dispute that I, when I had, you know, answered my summons, I told them what the problem was, and that my answer was, I never gave him consent to touch my body. There's case law. I had case law and everything in my answers. I had filed about this big, like a loose leaf book. I had researched case law. I had researched state statutes, Wisconsin administrative codes, federal statutes, you name it, I did it. I had it all down there. And then the judge had said, well, if she, if this is true, the doctor didn't have permission, that's a battery. And he knew, I know he knew, but he, I think he wanted to see how far I was going to go. And I wasn't going to be afraid of this, because this is wrong. And I challenge anybody of you to have to go through something like this. This is mental torment. I, to this day, this happened in '01. And when they had this second, when the hospital sued me, they came after me. They waited three years, which is coincidentally, the statute limitations on malpractice. That is no coincidence. They knew exactly how to time that. I told the judge that I wrote it in my summons answer, that's the document of legacies. They had no, they were procrastinating for no reason, because if they had a legal aid to stand on, they would have come after me. Because I don't know about you, but if I earn money, I don't care if it's $2, if I have a $2 refund, I write the company or whatever, I want my money. This was $20,000. And I know they knew that they had a huge legal liability on their head, and that's why they never responded when I wrote and said, I didn't sign anything. They let me sit for three years in a limbo, letting me believe probably, oh, she probably thinks we forgot about it, and we'll go after her afterward. We'll wait till we're in safe waters. And believe me, I researched everything. I've got, I've got research on what they did to me, what the job of the doctor is, the nurse, the corporate compliance responsibilities, the whole works. And I will not give up until I find out what is going on here. And so we had this supposed second trial in '06. It was supposed to be January of '06. And of course, I'm not an attorney, like you said, but I weren't taught a lot of stuff to myself. So what happened was, all of a sudden, the doctor couldn't show up, and he knew he had to be for this trial. So here, we're waiting, wait till April of '06. And I'm thinking, this is ridiculous. And I wrote a letter to the judge, and I told him, I says, they violate the court orders. There's no reason why he didn't, couldn't show up. He's not infirmed, he's not debilitated, or, you know, there's no reason why he can't come. Of course, I knew what the judge was going to write back to me. Of course, you know, there's this statute and that statute. That was no surprise to me. So I thought, fine. So then one day, I was at the computer working on this case, plus my mother's, that's another nightmare. Representative Lewinsky knows about it, because I was trying to get him to help me with this. And here's the postman, they had a letter to sign it. I thought, should I sign it or not? Because it was from this lawyer with this hospital business. And I thought, and the mailman, everybody knows about what's going on. So I signed it. Here, the doctor's going to be deposed. And you know why he's going to be deposed? Because they don't want to be shown up in person to show his demeanor in front of the jury, because he's got letters, which this one last lawyer was supposed to help me. She told me that they've been doing this, they got caught at it, and they're skunks. And that she wouldn't want to go against what I had.
I got a question. I have a question for the chair. So Susan, you were one of the first cases that came through my office as a rep in 2003, and it's for your mom. And I distinctly remember, we took your file, and we went through every state agency, and then all the local participants in civil matters. But it really where it stemmed from was, no private attorney would take your case.
Right.
And then you also didn't qualify for any public aid.
Right. And what happened was, they called the court of federal regulations, which that means the hospital under its, under Title 42.
So my question to you, though, is, in that situation where you don't qualify from an agency standpoint, but then you don't qualify from the private bar, in other words, the private economy of lawyering doesn't want to take your case, what should this committee do in that situation?
Well, the point is, we were never asking for freebies for an attorney. My sons were calling attorneys, trying to find them, when we'd go. And my, it's funny, too, another thing, when a woman calls, you cannot get anybody to listen to you. You cannot. But when a man calls, you can get results. When my sons would call, they would get results. But women, they will not. And my neighbor even, she told me once she had a problem, same thing, she agreed. Anyway, we weren't asking for no freebies. And I know I had a rock solid case, and what I have now found is really huge. And it shows that my constitutional rights were stolen from me, my right to equal protection under the law was taken from me. Right here, I did not find this until a year later, a year later after that bogus trial. It was just horrible. I found a verdict filed, and I paid for a jury. I paid for a six-person jury to hear this, because I trusted them. First, I was betrayed by the doctors in the hospital, then I was betrayed by the state, and then the piece de resistance was being betrayed by the court system, all people. I found this, when I went, I was talking to an attorney in town, and she said she couldn't find the case number, you know, we're on the telephone. And I says, well, believe me, it happened.
And I bring that up just because I think even my staff went on staff vacation time and handled part of that matter.
Well, this you don't even know about.
What I'm getting at is, what I'm getting at is that I, this is, I never thought I'd see this file again, but it's interesting. I am, I think the biggest issue that for the panel is that, you know, Mrs. Abbott has a legitimate claim, but the issue really was, back when it was still ripe, was that the private bar wouldn't take it, and it wasn't for lack of trying. We tried every attorney in the area and out of the area in a PI type of manner, that the recovery was not enough to justify the private attorney taking the case. That was what we got. And that, as it relates to the public indigency type of situation, or under the And that, as it relates to the public agency type of situation, or under the public supporting a private bar attorney for your case, your file just didn't mesh.
Well, well.
May I?
And that was, I mean, that's where you really want to get out.
May I interrupt for just a minute? I really apologize, because obviously, this is a very important issue to you, but we're over our allotted time, and we have a lot of people waiting. Are there some materials that you can submit to the committee?
I've got so many things. I have been to Finegold and all these people, they're supposed to be protecting our constitution rights. The point I want to tell you is, I found a verdict filed before a jury even deliberated. I want to know how that's possible. And I talked to a paralegal, and I happened to hear somebody in the post office mention about being a paralegal. I went to that person, asked him. I told him what was going on. That person told me, they paid the jury off. It's all corrupt. That's what she told me.
Okay.
And I can believe it, because you cannot. How can you file a verdict before people have even deliberated? How can that be possible? You can't. I paid for that.
Okay, thank you. And does the committee have any more questions for Mrs. Abbott? Thank you so much.
And this, there's no statute of limitations on what I found, so I will always pursue this. I won't give up, so I take my last breath. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. We'll hear now hear from Sally Olson, followed by Rebecca Paul.
Good afternoon. I'm Sally Olson, domestic violence victim advocate. I have been in this position at CAP Services for the past 16 years. CAP Services provides domestic abuse outreach services in Portage, Wapaka, and Washeira Counties. Our shelter for this service area is the Family Crisis Center in Stevens Point. It is accurate to say that we serve hundreds of victims of domestic abuse every year. I am here today to speak on behalf of many low-income victims who are in need of legal assistance to increase their safety and sense of well-being and move on with their lives. The comment is always heard, is often heard, if it's so bad, why doesn't she just leave him? We know that victims face many barriers when they're planning to leave, but when they share children with the abuser, these barriers are much greater. Even worse than the abuse is the mother's fear of losing her children, based in the abuser's threatening and recurrent statement of, if you ever leave me, you'll never see your kids again. It's important that victims have access to accurate, understandable, and timely legal information regarding their critical family-related issues. Questions about child custody and physical placement are among the most frequently asked and the most often misunderstood. Simply put, many individuals have very complicated situations, and there is not one easy answer for all. Some of the questions can be answered through brief legal consultation, but more often than not, require lengthy, full representation. Without legal representation, the individuals do not get fair and equal access to the justice system. This is most visible when one parent has a lawyer and the other does not. I have witnessed personally the devastating impact on unrepresented mothers when they must face their abuser, the father of their children, and his attorney in the courtroom. Some victims are very fortunate to receive legal services through Portage County Legal Aid, Judicare, and Legal Action of Wisconsin, but even more are not so fortunate. Victims' needs far exceed our current resources. The civil legal system needs of all income-eligible Wisconsin residents are just not being met. As an advocate, I am here to offer my support and assistance in helping the commission to fulfill its mission to bridge the justice gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Paul, followed by David Armstrong.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Paul, and I am a contract attorney with the Portage County Legal Aid Society. Some of what I might have told you today, Melissa Delphert has covered, she's our current board president, and I feel like I'm preaching to the choir a bit. I also work, share a wall with Sally Olson. I think my time is probably best spent rather than telling you what they've already told you, that many, many people come in and very few actually walk out with a lawyer. I happen to be one of the few. I think maybe I should tell you, generally speaking, about a couple of my clients. We mostly get needs for family law attorneys. We do a little landlord-tenant, a little bit of civil, some neighbor issues, some small claims issues, but we turn away, of course, criminal matters, contempt matters. We don't take anything outside of Portage County, and you have to be at the poverty level. I do want to say, out of turn, a case like Mrs. Abbott's, we wouldn't touch, because I'm the only guy there who would give her enough time to be able to say to her, I can't ask a pro-bone attorney to take your case. That's depositions, right? That's interrogatories. That's expert witnesses. There's no money for that. Unless I got it in my back pocket, we don't have money for that, so she wouldn't get help. In my shop, I'd feel badly for her, I'd worry about her, but I couldn't, I'd just, I'd send her off. So we all feel badly. I'm sure that happens more than any of us know. But back to what I do, I mostly work in family law, so the people that I meet with are mostly women. I have had some male clients, and they're complicated, horrible, crappy, wake-me-up-at-2 AM-and-flop-sweat kind of cases, because they walk in, and they are poor, they usually aren't working. If they are working, it's a part-time job at Walmart that doesn't offer health insurance, and they have to work around their mate's schedule. They usually have a high school degree, but not any time in college. They usually have other issues. They may be losing their home, they may be homeless, they may be on the public housing list. Occasionally, they come from the Family Crisis Center, but that's not the majority. They frequently move, they frequently change their cell phone numbers, so I can't find them. If they do work, they frequently lose a job, because the minute they split with their spouse or their partner, childcare goes up. And so somebody has to do childcare, or the money is gone for the childcare, so they can't go to the job, or the car is gone because he took it. So there's no car to get to work or to childcare. There's frequently very little family support. The other thing we anecdotally say when they walk on the door to people is, how's your family? You got any family? Your family got any money? You might want to talk to your family about this, because there's a waiting list for a lawyer, and I don't know that I can get you one, but what about your family? Well, the truth is, most of my clients have very little contact with family, or they come from very poor families. When they're domestically abused, they've often been kept from their families and their friends, so there's no one for them to turn to. Some of them are Mung, Southeast Asian, and some of them are Hispanic. But again, the majority are from the area, Caucasian females. They face homelessness, they face no vehicles, they face landlord-tenant issues that come up in all this. They face kids switching schools, they face needing counseling, they face losing or not having any access to healthcare. Even Badger Care, which a few years ago used to cover all the women with children, is now no longer accessible to many of them. So what do they doctor? Well, the ER, of course, on a Saturday night. That's if they have a car. I've had calls at home saying, could you drive me and my kid, because he's not breathing, and you're the only one I do? So the problems of people in poverty, I mean, I'm only, this is one little itty-bitty person with these. So the big issues are spouse or partner disappears, so then we can't find him to serve him or her. We've got alcoholics, we've got drug users, we've got drug dealers, we've got loss of job, despite all of us, or because they've been ordered to pay child support, which is a whole nother part of this that I probably don't have time to get into. They go to jail or prison because of the domestic abuse or one of the other issues, the drugs, the OWIs. And I got clients whose spouses have four and five OWIs. Somebody gets ill, somebody finds a new partner, somebody gets a new partner pregnant. The outsider's involved in a case like this. Sure, the judges, clerk of court, some of the lawyers, but then we've got local police departments, county police departments, we've got neighboring police departments, neighboring county police departments, we've got local social workers, we've got neighboring county social workers, we've got sometimes ministers and clergy, we've got pediatricians, maybe, internists, maybe, psychologists who need to get involved or have been all along, but we're losing our psychiatrists locally in my county, so they're on waiting lists to see psychiatrists to get the meds that maybe they or their children or their partners need to remain stable. We've got public defenders, we've got district attorneys, we've got probation and parole officers who I'm frequently calling to find out something on somebody. As a divorce lawyer, right? We've got schoolteachers who are involved, we've got the school principals who are generally involved, because they get to know one or both parents, sometimes in a good way, sometimes in a bad way. We've got therapists involved. I beg my clients to get to a therapist. They come back and say, well, there isn't anybody, there isn't any money, there isn't any health insurance, this line scale doesn't work, because there's a waiting list. And I say, but the guardian litim, another person, another outsider involved, can't make a good recommendation without knowing what the child psychologist thinks, because it doesn't matter what I say, it doesn't matter what mom says or dad says. So we've got neighbors involved, we've got employers sometimes involved, we've got YMCA employees sometimes involved in these, writing letters, calling cops. We've got Boys and Girls Club employees sometimes involved, writing letters, calling cops. We've got babysitters, we've got family and friends, and we've got sometimes very odd child exchange personnel, because my client and her spouse don't have any relatives in town who are willing to be there for the exchanges, so one person doesn't get hurt. So I'm calling all sorts of people to try to do that. Who wants to do that? Not me. So a typical client starts with, comes in because she needs a domestic abuse restraining order, so that's the first thing we go do, and it's terrifying for her. And then we need to file the divorce, and then we need to have them served, and then we need to get a guardian litim appointed. And this can take a minimum of eight months to 36 months. A divorce in Wisconsin only needs to last four months, as most of you probably know. Most of them, I'm guessing, go six to eight with people who can get along, but these issues are ginormous. And depositions? I got to pay if I want my client to get a deposition, I'm going to pay for it, because, I mean, we have a small fund at Legal Aid, but that doesn't go very far, and I got to share that with anybody else who's a pro-bone attorney in my county who's willing to take the case. I've got a client in Tchita. That's my gas. My time to go see her. So I know I'm running out of time, but I have a couple other things to add. I have, I had a Hispanic client recently.
Ms. Paul, I really apologize. We're way over.
I'm so sorry.
Could you, if you have just a wrap-up statement, maybe?
My one last thing is that I think the answer isn't lawyers, because I, my father and I went, my father's a retired dean, and he said, if every attorney in Portage County gave $100, you would have enough to cover these expenses. And I said, yeah, but why is this a lawyer problem? We sort of take care of our own. Why isn't this everybody, why doesn't everybody else give $10? That might actually really support a Legal Aid Society. So I'm sorry to go on, there's just, I'm very passionate, and there's so much to say, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. David Armstrong, followed by Jamie Keener. I hope I've pronounced that correctly.
Good evening. My name is David Armstrong, a staff attorney at Wisconsin Judicare in-law office. I am also the current president of the Indian Law Section of the State Bar of Wisconsin. Speaking tonight, though, in neither of those capacities, I'm speaking as a young attorney working in rural northern Wisconsin, who has a lot of familiarity with tribal members and legal issues they face. I know another speaker this evening, Jim Hawkins, is going to talk on behalf of the Great Lakes Center Tribal Council on broader issues relating to the tribes. So I'll leave some of these things for him and try and stick to particulars. Here in Wisconsin, we talk about the relationship between tribal courts and state courts as one of comedy. This is based on mutual respect and treatment as equals. And while there's many things to be excited about and happy about with Indian law and the status of the law that tribal members receive, both in tribal court and state court, with the adoption of things like the Wisconsin Indian Child Welfare Act, the discretionary transfer rule known as 80154, the joint court programs going on in Jackson County at the Ho-Chunk Nation, and in Bayfield with the Red Cliff Band, and the return of indigenous peacemaking, a mediation system based on traditional cultural values. Unfortunately, the justice that tribal members often receive is not equal. There are shared situations with all of the residents of rural northern Wisconsin that are exacerbated for tribal members. In many of our rural communities, there is a handful of practicing attorneys, and by handful, I do mean less than five in the county. In these situations, a baby boomer electing to close their practice is tragic. It may remove the only county, the only attorney in the county that took a certain type of case, or was not currently employed by the county. We are facing in the next 10 years a critical shortage of attorneys in northern Wisconsin, and they are not being replaced by young attorneys. We are soon going to find ourselves in situations where there are not attorneys in counties other than those employed by the county. This is exacerbated for tribal members, because many attorneys do not wish to go to the extra step of learning basic Indian law, either taking bar exams for admission to tribal court, or learning tribal court procedures, and seeking admission based on their Wisconsin law license. I am admitted in tribal courts, and I can speak personally that tribal court rules, tribal court procedures are no more onerous than those in the state of Wisconsin, and are more concerned with actual justice than is often found in state courts. So as a group, I urge you to consider, how can we get more attorneys into northern Wisconsin, and how can we encourage more attorneys to work in our tribal courts? Given the shared destiny and the shared relationships that tribal members have with their local communities, it is our duty as members of the State Bar and as citizens of the state of Wisconsin to ensure that justice for all Wisconsin citizens is equal. Now, many of the problems that occur with tribal courts are historical and related to funding. This is a federal issue that's for the federal government to address, but in the state, there are, there is a role we can play. Services provided to tribal members provide a benefit to the state of Wisconsin. Recruitment of Social Security Disability Awards provide extra income, which is spent in the local community. Anyone familiar with an Indian reservation knows that there is not a retail economy often in existence. I spent this morning at the Menominee Reservation, they just recently opened the first grocery store on the reservation. Prior to that, every paycheck earned on that reservation was spent in the town of Shawno, basically. So any additional public benefits that can come to those members is a benefit to the state. Any work that can be done to eliminate barriers to employment, including preventing wrongful tribal court convictions, or pleas to crimes which have collateral consequences for employment, such as battery or domestic violence, are a benefit to the state. Additionally, the provision of housing benefits and health services by tribes saves the state of Wisconsin money, so we should do all we can to help those individuals. On a federal level, basic services which tribal members struggle to find in the legal context can save the federal government thousands of dollars per year. It's documented that estate planning services provided to tribal members who own reservation lands save the Bureau of Indian Affairs and the Department of Interior at least $1,000 per tribal member per year. Yet, this service, which Wisconsin Judicare does pay attorneys to do, is hard to find attorneys to provide the service, and it is further difficult that many people don't qualify for our services. The income threshold for Wisconsin Judicare at maximum is 200% of the federal poverty guideline. 125% of the federal poverty guideline is what we normally apply. This leaves a huge number of people that are unserved. My organization has partnered with law schools to provide services for free to anyone who can come in for these estate planning services. We receive no money from the federal government to do this. We do it because it enhances people's lives and helps people exert the maximum authority over their property. However, it does save the federal government money. Child support programs run by tribes recruit more in payments than state-run programs do as a percentage, and the cost of incarceration that eventually results from federal charges on an Indian reservation can be saved by providing representation at the trial level at the tribal court. There are solutions to this problem available here in Wisconsin. What we need more than any- What we need more than anything in rural communities is more attorneys. We're, as I mentioned before, we're facing fewer and fewer attorneys in the northwestern part of the state and the western part of the state. Tribal courts have the added advantage of being able to license non-attorneys. A tribal advocate program would help, situated at a community college or technical school, can help provide tribes with resources to have advocates available at an affordable price in their courts. But oftentimes, tribal members do go to state court and find themselves in state courts. So we must find a way to encourage young attorneys to move north, take jobs in these rural towns. I'm heartened to see programs like the one recently that was sponsored by the Iowa State Bar to encourage attorney, young attorneys in law school to go and work in small rural communities, not in a legal services context, not in the context of working for a court or a nonprofit, but working for a small-town attorney. This is the only way I see that we can encourage young attorneys from Milwaukee or Madison to make the long trek north. However, more than that needs to be done. Some form of assistance need to be provided in the form of loan repayment or loan forgiveness for attorneys who work in underserved areas and for legal services. A person graduating law school with over $100,000 in debt cannot afford to take the risk of earning $20,000 a year. So we must look as to how we can address both the expensive legal education and repayment of loans for those that are in these desperately needed areas. Furthermore, we need to inculcate pro bono into students as they're emerging from law school. I'm, I am encouraged by New York's recent requirement that law students complete 50 hours of pro bono before seeking admission to the bar. We have partnered with a New York law school. We provide that 50 hours in one week for those students. But many of those students leave saying that that's the best practical education they have gotten in three years. So, so a requirement like that could be assisted here in Wisconsin, particularly as part of the diploma privilege. Finally, well, excuse me, not finally, I have one other point after this. Limited scope rules to allow attorneys in small firms or in, in rural communities or even in Madison to just address one element of a case. Assist with preparation of a brief, preparation of a court filing, without facing the potential of being forced to appear for the remainder of what is often a long and messy case. Would help to encourage attorneys to provide some at least limited assist, assistance for pro bono level. And finally, I'll repeat the statement that you will probably hear all night, which is funding, funding, funding. Funding for legal services, funding for pro bono projects, funding for programs which serve those of modest means and of low means is the only way we can start to address this situation. And this funding has to come from more than the bar. It has to come from the state as a whole and from the people of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Jamie Keener and followed by Laura Scudary.
Uh, thank you to the panel for, uh, well, first of all, hosting this event, and I'm pleased to be invited to participate. Um, I am the program coordinator. My name is Jamie Keener, and I am the program coordinator for the Justice Works Family Law Information Center located in Stevens Point. Um, in 2007, Justice Works and the Portage County Legal Aid Society pooled resources to open the Family Law Information Center. Uh, the great majority of the individuals we see are coming through with divorce cases, although we are seeing an increase with, uh, post-judgment actions, particularly with the way the economy has changed. In January of 2012, judges from the Portage County Circuit Court enacted a local court order that Catherine Monk talked about earlier for the certificate of readiness. Those fees help, uh, supplement our program, but they certainly don't help sustain that program. How it works is we have walk-in hours from noon to 1:00, Monday through Friday, and we schedule appointments for individuals if they, uh, need some extra time outside of that. There's just one paid staff person, and that's me. Um, since the program's inception in 2007, we've relied on trained volunteers to help administer the service, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say how much I appreciate the service and the generosity of our volunteers that they've shown with their time and talents. Sally's one of them. Um, in July of this year, we marked our 1,000th service recipient since the program began in 2007. As of September 29th of this year, we've served 234 just in 2012. It may come as no surprise that the majority of divorce filings in Portage County involve unrepresented litigants, litigants, but perhaps what's most startling is how very few have both parties represented by counsel. Now, when we discuss the financial situations that these individuals are in, what we're really talking about are four different groups. The first group being those who qualify for a waiver of the fees, and that's that 125% of poverty or less. Those make up just a little over a quarter, about 28% of the individuals we see, and we often, often will refer those to Portage County Legal Aid. Then there's another group that make up the majority of the individuals we see, and they're that 125 to 200% of poverty. These families may not be in dire straits, but they are living paycheck to paycheck, one medical emergency, one blown car engine away from determining what goes on the dinner table that night. Then there's another group that's above that 200% of poverty. They're not wealthy or comfortable, but may have a small financial cushion, maybe a small retirement account, a retirement account or own a home. They make an annual household income of about $52,000. Uh, most recent U.S. Census numbers indicate that the median annual income in Wisconsin is $51,598. Many of these individuals that we're serving are the average Wisconsin family. Theoretically, they could afford legal representation, but they don't have the cash on hand and may have to dip into those investments that they may, may very likely divide in a divorce action, besides the fact that if they had disposable income, they may not be coming to see us for a divorce in the first place. Then there's a fourth group, those that can afford legal fees but don't want to pay them. They may say bringing attorneys into the fold is only gonna complicate things when, in reality, the reason things are complicated is just the reason they needed a, an attorney in the first place. What do all these groups have in common? They're our neighbors. They're the people I see every day in the grocery store, in the school where my kids go, along the sidelines of sporting events, and my church. I had the, uh, unfortunate experience of teaching Sunday School to a young man on a Sunday morning, and that week I was, later that week, I was helping his parents go through their divorce. These are people we know every day. What we've been doing in the Family Law Information Center has had some very good results in reducing the repeat number of, of individuals going back to court, um, in Portage County, which saves Portage County valuable resources, and most importantly, at least for me, is it saves an emotional toll on those individuals that have to go before court. What's missing is, is where there is legal representation, maybe there can be legal assistance. Uh, that can help fill a void. For example, having, uh, attorneys provide limited legal assistance, uh, for those common issues, just very similar to what we saw in the, in the video. Just 20 minutes a month. Come in and have someone sit down. I've got these questions. Can you answer these for me? Without knowing that, hey, this is, or with knowing that this is not constitute representation, what this constitutes is just getting some, some help. Similar clinics are operating in Fond du Lac County and Alagami County. As a video showed, they're all over the state. This helps, adding attorneys not only helps the, uh, litigants, but it's also in addition of an extremely important component in the process. It bridges the gap, not just in the justice system, but between individuals like myself who are running a pro se operation and attorneys so that we can build a relationship together. Again, we are not the answer to the problem. We are just a response to the court system and to what the litigants are facing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Laura Scudary.
Hi there. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Laura Scudary, and I'm the executive director of Bridge Community Health Clinic here in La Salle. We are a FQHC, which is a federally qualified health center, and I wanted to come and talk to you today, uh, about something that I love to talk about, but I have very little occasions to talk about it. It's our medical legal partnership. Uh, in 2010, we contracted with Judicare to have them come onsite to Bridge Clinic once a week to meet with our patients about, uh, concerns that affect their health that are legal concerns. And sometimes those concerns were direct, um, poor living conditions or, uh, housing situations, and sometimes they were indirect because of stress that was impacting their health. Um, the example I tend to give is, uh, we at the clinic can help children who, we can, we can treat asthma, but we can't do anything about the landlord not cleaning up the mold in, in the house. So really, this medical legal partnership, the intent was to improve people's health by giving them, uh, access to legal representation, uh, for free. So in 2010, we, we contracted, and we've actually seen over 100 patients since then, uh, with legal concerns. And the legal concerns range from having enough, not having enough food to eat to being denied assistance for various programs, uh, disagreements, uh, worried about child safeties, um, legal relationships in the family and, um, having trouble working because of healthcare concerns. Uh, those are common, common problems. And, uh, each week on Wednesday morning, uh, our patients, uh, have the opportunity to meet with an attorney, and, uh, they off, we actually, uh, survey each patient that comes through Bridge Community Health Clinic. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with community health centers, but our patient population is primarily under the, the federal poverty line. So we have a lot of people that are uninsured, underinsured, underserved people, uh, with varying health needs and, uh, generally living in poverty situations. So our current funding is going to be exhaustive as of December, but this is a very successful program. Uh, in fact, other community health centers are looking to replicate our program because it has been so successful, and it's, uh, currently, the program costs about $12,000 a year to operate. It's a very low-cost program for the outcomes that we receive. One example of, of a, a good example of a patient that was helped by this program was that we had a patient who was, uh, experiencing symptoms of depression, was seeing one of our counselors. We surveyed him, found out that he did have legal concerns. His legal concern was that he, he had a child with a woman, and the woman took off with a child, and he didn't have any, uh, rights. And so what we did, uh, what the, what the, the medical legal partnership did was they got him, got him to see an attorney. The attorney was able to, uh, work with the patient on this issue, um, and, uh, we got him some visitation rights at the end. So this actually affected this patient's health situation because, uh, you know, this, the stress and the situation was affecting his depression. So we're really looking, and this is my big project, is trying to look at every patient as a whole person, not just individual problems and concerns. We want to treat the whole patient, and so this is really where this project is, was fantastic and very, very successful. Let's see. Uh, the, the health problems are often heartbreaking, uh, and they affect every area of our patients' lives. Um, and I just, I want to leave you with that, uh, programs like ours make a big difference in our patients' lives and especially their ability to cope with obstacles and, uh, deal with the situations that arise that you and I might, might have the resources to deal with, but they do not. And, um, it gives our patients much-needed consultation and referrals and helps them, uh, and helps us continue towards a healthcare environment that serves an entire individual, not just certain problem areas. So, thank you so much for having me today. I really appreciate you listening. Have a good day.
Are your lawyers serving, uh, on a pro bono basis?
Uh, yes. The cost of the pro, program, we do have some lawyers that, uh, do give services pro bono, but we, the cost of the program is really through Judicare, and so it's to provide some support for, um, just the administrative, administration of the program, the program itself, and then, uh, some, some, uh, assistance with the, uh, well, mostly, yeah, the administration of the program. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from James Hawkins, followed by Karen Lushow. And Karen, if I'm mispronouncing your name, I hope you'll correct me.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Hawkins. I'm an attorney with Wisconsin Judicare. Excuse me, I was a attorney with Wisconsin Judicare. There's been a lot of talk about them. I work for the Great Lakes Center Tribal Council up at Lake de Flambio. Uh, I've been in Indian law now for just about a little over 35 years. My experience spans, uh, a great development in, uh, tribal government and tribal courts. Um, I began with a law firm, uh, in Madison that was representing the Menominee tribe in its re-establishment of its tribal government, and the Menominee tribe was the first tribe to establish its own tribal court modeled pretty much on Anglo-Saxon jurisprudence. But in the meantime, other tribal courts have, uh, developed, uh, beginning with conservation courts due to the recognition of, uh, tribal user's fractuary rights. Uh, and in my career, I have worked for tribes, uh, in, in tribal courts, state courts and federal courts. Uh, I have been a tribal prosecutor. Uh, I have represented the tribes in, uh, or tribal housing authorities in evictions. I have represented the tribes in conservation cases, and I will say that invariably, the other side is unrepresented. Now, part of this is, uh, a matter of expense. Part of it is a matter of how many attorneys are willing to venture into tribal court because they fear the, uh, the, uh, rules of practice and the, uh, perhaps, uh, predictability of outcomes in a case. Uh, there are just a handful who are willing to step into tribal court, and the tribal court judges have expressed to me over the years their frustration that's felt by judges and prosecutors in other courts that unrepresented, uh, people are at a substantial disadvantage. And how do we, how do we address that? We've heard from, uh, Dave Armstrong about the, uh, the, uh, need for increased training, increased sensitivity to the, uh, ability and, um, the abilities of tribal courts, but the, uh, but the, the fact of the matter is that even after 35 years, uh, there has been just very little movement in this direction. I want to point out the joint interests of tribes and the adjacent communities and citizens in general in addressing issues of safety and protection. For successes, I can point out the work of state and tribal courts and judges in addressing intercourt issues, uh, jurisdiction and convenience, and institutionally, the state and those tribal governments have seen astonishing progress over the years in resolving, uh, many issues, uh, between them. However, where the need to access to justice is greatest is at the grassroots, at the individual level, where a single prosecutorial decision, and I speak of the, I speak of prosecutorial decisions as, uh, including not only criminal but civil, uh, penalty cases, uh, can become the event of a lifetime. And conversely, a single wrongful act, unaddressed and unredressed, can have consequences to multiple generations. Tribal communities grapple with the same issues as other communities, social welfare, uh, domestic relations and violence, elder abuse, prescription drug abuse, to name a few, that impact the lives of individuals and families. And state courts and enforcement are all too often seen as distant and unresponsive. Yet, Lake de Flambio, the, uh, county seat is 35 miles from the reservation, posing incredible transportation problems just to get across the county to, for follow-up services. And then the, um, in civil matters, local attorneys are refusefully reluctant to travel into, to venture into tribal courts, uh, due to uncertainty about the rules of practice or predictability of the outcome. Quite frankly, I have no specific suggestions for improvements. It does little for me to say that more funds, more training and more staff are needed for prosecution defense and individual act, advocacy, although, of course, that is always and increasingly the case, has been, has been, uh, elucidated by others who's, who preceded me. My years with Wisconsin Judicare included some major developments in Indian law, but they also demonstrated time and again the broader impact of individual cases. But individual case funding grows smaller every year. Uh, what I say today is a personal ins, observation, merely a summary of comments heard in Indian country over the last 35 years. I say it with a certain pride in the Wisconsin way, that, uh, this was evidenced in the earliest years of statehood when the Wisconsin Legislature memorialized Congress to prevent the military removal of certain tribes from the state. Despite some bumps in the road, the history of state and tribal relations in this state leaves me confident that increased communication and cooperation between the systems, court to court, legislative council, pro- to court, legislative council, prosecutor to prosecutor, and agency to agency can result in better awareness of the greater impacts of inattention or the perceived casual dismissal of individual access to courts and their related services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you supplement your remarks by sending us some information on how a person would, an attorney would become qualified to practice before the tribal courts? That might be a mission that we could definitely follow up on.
Certainly. And one of your panel members, Howie Bickler, is, has about the equivalent experience as I do and probably has worked in the trenches grappling with those things even more than I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Karen, followed by Catherine Rubino.
Hi, I'm Karen Lushow. I am an attorney, a solo practitioner attorney. I practice primarily in Portage in Wood County. I also practice in Marathon County. And due to my de facto business plan of do all the cases that nobody else really likes to do, I end up in Florence County and Forest County and Jackson County and I, which is a really rich and fulfilling experience for me, especially since it's cases I like to do. So I'm really interested in perhaps looking into this Indian law thing. But I am a Judicare participating attorney. And as far as I know, I'm the only attorney in Portage County that takes Judicare cases. I get Judicare cases, one of two, or two, there's two ways I get cases. One is I'm on a list, and when the clients get the list, they call me and they say, "This is the issue that I have." Another way that I get cases is Judicare staff members screen the case, and they know they want to support it, but they need to find an attorney in Portage County to take the case. Or sometimes they ask me to do Wapaka or Marathon County, and I get a phone call asking if I would, they explain the situation and ask me to take the case. And I, I do. I take as many cases as I can. The majority of cases that come my way are landlord-tenant cases, divorce cases, and placement and custody. I would say the majority of cases I get are placement and custody. And in the handbook that you receive that says the kind of cases that Judicare can take, placement and custody is pretty much excluded from that, which just breaks my heart because not only do we have the situations where you have domestic violence, but you also have the situations where mom has absconded with the child, dad is left in the lurch, and there's really no support for him. And meanwhile, dad may have not taken an active role initially, or there may have been some other issue going on, or mom may just be very angry and not want her to be, the child to be around dad, but that kid loses out. I also do a great deal of guardian ad litem cases. I spend hours and hours and hours on the phone with people because I know those cases aren't funded, explaining the procedures, the placement factors, how a guardian ad litem is involved, what the guardian ad litem does. And, you know, I help people fill out the paperwork to get those things going, but I don't know what happens after that. The unfortunate thing is on a, on those cases is, there isn't an attorney, but there is a guardian ad litem appointed. So then you have a guardian ad litem basically helping mom and dad and representing the best interests of the child. That, and for a reduced rate, higher than what you get paid for for Judicare, but yet a reduced rate. So that guardian ad litem is doing kind of triple duty to push this case through and get some sort of resolution. I would be over the moon if the number of people that need placement and custody assistance could get that. The Family Law Center has been instrumental, I believe, in helping with that. But it is, I definitely, definitely a need. We have many, many, many more people living in situations where parents were never married, multiple marriages, multiple families living together, and it all becomes very complicated. One of the other things I'd like to point out is, I believe your name's Susan? Susan's presentation and her complex issues, that's pretty typical. When somebody comes in, they, our clients do not know what's important in a case, so you just get this like whoosh of stuff. And you have to pick that apart to see if in fact there is a case. And sometimes they come in with a whole bunch of hullabaloo that's not really the case, and you have to figure that out. And once you figure it out, then you have to start all over again with what the actual issue is. I just had one of those the other day where they came in with one issue, but they really had another one. And it took a long time to get to that point. I spend, like I said, a lot of hours. I believe that I am doing my part, but I think long-term, that's probably not the best business plan. The number of pro bono hours, I don't even keep track, just because I, I make an estimation at the end. I know that I underestimate. And I know that not everybody can do that. I have the time, inclination, and the energy to do the amount of pro bono work I do in addition to the Judicare cases, guardian ad litem, whatever else. But there are a lot of needs in the community, and we service a lot of families. And I believe it's in the preamble of the Chapter 48, which is the Child in Need of Protection and Services, that families are the foundation of our society. And if we have destabilized families, we have destabilized communities. And if we can bolster those communities or those families, I think we're bolstering the community and making us stronger all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Rubino.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Rubino. I'm the donations director at The Neighbor's Place and Furniture Bank. And I'm filling in for our executive director, Tom Rowe. So mine's going to be very short. At The Neighbor's Place in Wausau, we're a human resource, or a human services organization. And what we do is we work with populations that are in need at or near poverty level or far below poverty level. And this is what we do every day, all day. We have the largest food bank in Marathon County. We have a low literacy program where we do tutoring for people of low literacy. We also have the Furniture Bank where we try to help stabilize the families that we just talked about that may be coming out of shelters, homelessness, or other situations where they have been maybe couch surfing, but haven't had a real place that they call home. And so what we do is to try and provide with donations that we get into The Neighbor's Place to try and help stabilize families. Most of the families we live with, or we work with, if their barrier is not only poverty, but it's oftentimes low language, low literacy, mental health barriers is a huge one. And those with mental health barriers and cognitive disabilities, and then the whole issue of homelessness. And what our previous speaker just talked about was destabilizing, destabilization of families and destabilization of community is really what we're seeing in this whole population. It seems like every day, all of us are addressing issues of having little access to the judicial system and very complex situations, as somebody else just mentioned. But the, and I realize the issue, I mean, we try to refer many people to Judicare because that's the only possibility for them to have access to the legal system. But within at least Marathon County, our personnel that's available in Judicare because of their budgets, because of the lack of personnel, our population seems to have very little access to deal with housing issues, is for instance, one thing. A huge amount of issues regarding landlords and renters. And this is something that I deal with every day. I don't know if anybody I've ever dealt with has ever received a security deposit back. And I can go into these homes, I can go into these apartments, they certainly look clean to me, they certainly look like everything else is taken care of, but for one reason or another, we aren't getting security deposits. This is not a population that can afford to lose that if they're following the rules. So I'm here today just to basically be a voice for some of the people that don't seem to have a voice. And hopefully, you know, our legal system can do some improvements with that. Thank you.
I have represented some people with regard to the security deposit issue, and I believe we really should look at the law in that area. You know, many other things in life, you have to do certain affirmative things to tell the person about all their rights and put some real teeth into it. Do you have some comments about that at all in terms of changes in the legislation in the security deposit area?
I don't know that I'm qualified to, to really say that. But, you know, it's interesting to me that people can have, for instance, in their lease that this apartment is coming with a stove and a refrigerator. That doesn't mean it has to work. And so at least two times a week, I'm getting calls. I've got families without stoves in their apartments. I've got families without refrigerators. And, you know, we rely totally on donations to assist these people. This is the only organization in the area where people can come and we don't charge for our services. It is free. So I'm a retired healthcare professional. I have, you know, I have a real need to get those kind of things to people. That to me is an emergency in the house in this day and age. We should not have a family in our community without those kinds of simple appliances. And yet landlords feel so often, "So what if it broke? We're not replacing it."
Thank you. Believe it or not, that was our last scheduled testimony. Before we conclude, I wonder if any of the panelists have anything that they would like to say. I'm going to give you the last word, Maury, so.
Well, what we're going to do is vote to translate this proceeding. And we're going to pick out some of the things that are, some of the review.
Could you turn your microphone on? Thank you.
Some attention. And we'll put that all together, and we're going to make some use of it over time. And so we definitely appreciate everybody that came in here. I was impressed by everybody that talked, and I think we all have a idea of the issues that I sort of mentioned in the video did in the very beginning. Number one, the fact that we have a very large number of people who, in this state, who can't get legal representation or even any help with regard to litigation that they might be involved with or legal problems. And that is partly a result of everybody to some degree. It's a part result of not being able to have attorneys in parts of the state that will participate in many of these programs. There's also a lot of issues with regard to funding. And we hope that through these presentations, we will be able to solve some of these problems over time. So we thank you all for having come.
Yes.
I'd just like to say something about people who don't know the language. I don't know about Mung, but I do know a lot with Hispanic people. And getting a good person to translate is not always easy. I know a person who had taught Spanish all his life, high school, college. We were trying to translate the word confidential. There is no word in Spanish for confidential. I asked this guy if that was true. He said, "I'll look in my dictionaries." He looked in his dictionaries, and he couldn't find any. So he said, "Use the word secret." So I went back to the lady who was trying to translate, and she was from Mexico, and she said, "You don't use that word. It's sinister in Mexico." So there is the part, the person who lived in the countries and knows the innuendos of different words, that's important. Another difficulty they have is they come from a country where you can't trust the legal system. So you have to work through that issue. Then whichever side you're on with this issue, it's whether or not they have papers, and that always gets to be another thing. Another word is notario. In Mexico, that means lawyer. A notary publican here, they think is a lawyer. That's the basis of scams. And so you have to tell them over and over and over, but they say, "No, what they said." You know, so those are complex issues when we work with people from other countries.
Thank you. And once again, we'd like to thank Wisconsin Judicare for all of their hard work in setting this event up. Thanks to Chris Berg, our technical expert in the back. We're thankful to University of Wisconsin, Marathon County, for providing this wonderful space. And also on behalf of the panelists, we'd just like to thank all of you who took the time to come and to share your testimonies. Thank you.
Eric, I have a question. In the format we have, which is really good, it's great in light of, it helps keep people's memories. I'd like to know, or have the committee tell us, do you want more detailed information? Because a lot of us couldn't do that many where we were, actually, most of us know everybody here, so we know they're going to be the same. But if we had other information, what format would you like to get it in, and where should we send it so that it can use it? Because the biggest problem with pro bono, as many of you said it, we're really busy doing pro bono. We don't get paid for that. So what's the most effective way for us to get more detailed information to the committee? And what information do you want to know?
Don, do you mind if I repeat that, just because we weren't in the microphone? So what is the most important information the commission wishes to know, and how can people get that information to the commission?
Well, one of the things that we did not get much of today was actual client situations, which are always very good. We could, we could use those. There are some sources for that available, but if, if you can get the clients to agree, maybe not having their name involved in it, but to agree to a set of facts that would demonstrate their situation and give that to us, we could certainly use that for, on our website. In fact, we're going to have on our new website that's coming up, we're going to have a spot where there's going to be a client story changing about every, is it month or so, Jeff? That it would be changing. So that's certainly an area that we needed. Jeff Brown is with the State Bar. He's the pro bono coordinator with the State Bar. Anything that you would want to submit, I think which appropriate place would be to go to Jeff, because Jeff can send it out to everybody on the commission rather than send us each individually things. Anything else, Jeff, that you would think that you need as state pro bono coordinator, so to speak? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.